One Nation.
One Nation.
Under God.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
Liberty for all.
Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. So, Dan, have a roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Eriko.
Here.
Mrs. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Yeah.
Mrs. Maroni.
Here.
Dr. Chen.
Here.
Mrs. Conway.
Here.
Mrs. Budowski.
Here.
Mrs. Matiker.
Here.
Board President, Mrs. Peng.
Thank you. Okay, opening statement. Here we go. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public who have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News and Tribune and the Star-Ledger on May 19, 2020. The public may participate in regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and applicable state regulations. Okay, just to let the public know what our schedule is for tonight, we're going to go into closed session right now. I expect to be, I'm going to be honest, probably until 7:30. We have a lot to discuss. So I'm going to try to keep Patrick and Mr. Barker updated on what time we're going to be coming back and maybe they could post something, but I'm going to say right now it looks like 7:30. All right. Do we need a resolution, Mr. Mashad?
Yes, I'll read it now.
Good.
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 221 Public Most of Month 75, permits the exclusion of the public from its meaning in certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the Towns of Edison's following one, the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the herein specified subject matters to the general nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows: Attorney-client privilege discussion regarding student matters, bus contractor settlements, status of contract negotiations, litigation brought on by former employees, ETA grievances, perk and unfair labor practices, personnel matters, and superintendent's valuation. Under personnel, we'll be discussing resignations and terminations, retirements, appointments, leave of aptices, changes of status, teacher reappointments, paraprofessional and teacher grade reappointments, lunch aid reappointments, reappointment revisions, transfers, experience stipends, summer literacy academy, summer enrichment, and summer activities programs, head nurse stipends, substitutes, summer curriculum writing, extended school year for 2020, learning leaders for Title II, middle school team leaders, summer schools, summer guidance counselors, summer secretarial support, secretary 3B, summer appointments, co-curricular appointments, job descriptions, authorization to employ staff members, withholding of increment, and authorization to approve a request for extended health benefits. Three, it is anticipated this time that the above stated subject matters should be made public at such times as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists, and for this resolution shall take effect immediately.
Can I have a motion, please?
Motionable.
Jerry and Beth, please, thank you.
Mrs. Matiker.
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Okay, we'll be back hopefully by 7:30. We'll keep the public notified, and if everyone could now sign off and go into the closed session portion, we'll see you there. Thank you. Welcome back, public. We got back a few minutes earlier. Mr. Shi made a good suggestion, we're going to go back into closed session after this, but no action will be taken after this when we go back into closed section, so I just want to let the public know that. At this time, we need a motion to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene.
Jerry and Carol. Please put yourself on mute if you're not on mute right now. Because you're getting background noise. Good suggestion, we're going to go back into closed session after this, but no action will be taken after this. Beth, can you mute?
I can't.
Beth and Dan, oh no, you're not. Beth, you're not.
I'm going to take a vote for the...
Now, oh, no, there you go back up. There you go. All right, we got the motion in a second.
Okay, Mrs. Matiker.
Now you're going to unmute.
See, why did you put her on mute?
Mrs. Matiker, to go to reconvene.
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski.
Beth, you're not.
Mr. Budowski.
I'm going to take a vote for the...
Yes.
There you go.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
We got the motion in a second.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker.
Now you're going to...
Is Mrs. Peng on yet?
She's coming on right now.
Okay. Mrs. Maroni.
We can wait.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Eriko.
Yes.
Okay, if Mrs. Peng is on there, I'll take her vote.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker.
Okay.
Is Mrs. Peng on yet?
She's coming on right now.
Okay. Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Mr. Shi.
Was that Miss Peng's guess?
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Mrs. Eriko.
Yes. Yes.
Hello.
If Miss Peng is on there, I'll take her vote.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker.
Okay. All right, we get a lot of feedback. It didn't repeat.
Yes. She's the phone.
Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Was that Miss Peng?
Mrs. Peng, we're taking a vote to reconvene. Yes, yes.
Hello.
Hold on, can everyone mute? And I'll ask Miss Peng, Miss Peng, we made a motion and second to reconvene?
Yes.
Okay, Miss Peng said yes.
We're back into open session.
Okay, thank you. All right, so at this point, we're going to do a little switch. Under number six, instead of number one, under number six, we're going to do administration, student recognition first. Dr. Bragan.
Thank you, Board President, Eriko. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Charlie Ross, the principal of Edison High School, to recognize his students and staff. Mr. Ross.
All right, Dr. Bragan, thank you very much, members of the Board of Education. I appreciate this. Pardon my enthusiasm and my informal dress, but never since Mr. Pataglia first opened up this high school has there ever been a team of such renown. I'm talking about your white division champions, our basketball team, first up for our student recognition. We have the first ever boys championship team, underclassmen Sebastian Abrilu, Taron Spears, Jalen Farrell, and Nico Barnes, and our senior class, starting with our president, Malachi White, Taiyi Martin, super-shooting Shane Doherty, and our first team, all GMC, all-white division, swoop into the hoop, Emmanuel Devilla, and bounding and astounding Mr. Nassir McLean as first team, all-white division, under GMC Coach of the Year, Mr. Charlie Moore. Thank you guys all so much for coming out today and sharing that moment with our kids. It meant so much. Now, Dr. Bragan and the board, you guys haven't seen fit to build me a bowling alley yet, so we're going to have to stay here for the rest of the recognitions, but I want to shout out from Tracy Smith and our bowling team, Ms. Gina Fitz was GMC All-Red Division, Ms. Fabian Jean-Denis, who was GMC All-Red Division, and GMC All-Conference. For the Edison High School, and it's an Edison Township, Matouchen Township Unified Hockey Team, from Edison High, we need to shout out our senior, Mr. Christian Osmo, who was All-GMC Conference. And also putting up a banner in the gym this year will be our Edison High School Cheerleading Team. Their consist of, under Coach Greg War, Ms. Megan Cashin, Colby Cleary, Gina Durkin, Lizzie Murillo, Jenna Papa, Kayla Tango, Kirsten Tierney, Makaya Williams Franklin, Haley Collins, Tatiana DePaolo, Katie Gardner, Leila Coast, Annabelle Lee, Mackenzie Rowe, Hope Stansberry, Brianna Viegas, Nicole Yasko, Riley Abrams, Jettie Perez, Gabe Romero, Mackenzie Caffrey, Rial Lumino, Ariana Orozco, and Milan Trapp. That was for game day performance state championship. Great job, guys. Now, in SCC LA Fall Leadership Conference, getting a silver medal, we had Joanne Chen, Samantha Hagens, Brianna Quinn, and Kayla Ramnerin. And getting a gold medal for SCC LA was Ayush Jasnani, Meha Chef, Desnadochi, and Shreya Manchand. Next up, we have our Edison High School 2019/2020 New Jersey Scholars. Our finalist was Ms. Colleen Tong. And Edison High School National Merit Finalist, Ms. Kathleen Zhao. I'd also want to give a big shout out to Ms. Amy Jean, who helped put together with the community our Black Lives Matters protest this Monday, a great way to use your student voice to show respect for making the world better. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to my compatriot on the North Side, the fine Dr. Anthony Shaw. Thank you, everybody.
Dr. Shaw, I don't think we can hear you.
I apologize, I did not unmute myself. Girls soccer. Are we there? Can you hear me?
Good to go.
There we go. Girls soccer, Kaitlyn Clemens, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference. Girls soccer, Mia Cheshire, GMC All-Red Division. Boys bowling, Patrick Arrulio, GMC All-White Division. Boys bowling, Brian McAdams, GMC All-Conference, GMC All-White Division. Girls bowling, Ioana Hyman Cruz, GMC All-Conference, GMC All-White Division. Girls basketball, Megan Duffy, GMC All-Red Division, First Team, All-Conference. Girls winter track, the team earned the sportsmanship award. Girls winter track, Sanai Johnson, Kayla Saleem, and Michelle Lim, GMC All-Red Division. Girls swim team, Kavya Patel, All-Red Division. Girls swim team, Cecilia Bailey, Ruth Bailey, and Michelle Kim, All-Red Division, All-Conference, GMC First Place Freestyle Relat. Girls swim team, Anushree Gate, All-Red Division, All-Conference, GMC First Place Backstroke, GMC First Place 200 Freestyle Relat. Boys swim team, Karen Huang, Nathan Zong, GMC All-Red Division, GMC All-Conference. Girls tennis, Aneeshah Synthanam, All-Red Division, All-Conference, GMC Champion Second Doubles. Odyssey of the Mind, Rob Bellani. Rob Bellani. Rob Bellani. Rama Despande, Rebecca Fang, Naimi Jane, Jashika Kumran, Arya Patel, Shreya K. Subramaniam, Anthony Kim, Rahil Patel, Jason Patel, Yash Patel, John Parokal, Raul Singh, Aditya Srakant, Sunny Chen, Apurv Jayakumar, Sharon Pan, Sneha Pentabandala, Saman Santorgi, Andrew Jeong, and Justin Young. Gateway Tournament Regional Competition First Place. National Merit Finalists, Akshash Waitong Anna, Soham Banerjee, Cynthia Cow, Ethan G. Epstein, Kushagra Ghosh, Ojus Jane, Neil A. Jog, Jada E. Kang, Vitale Asia Mudigati, Eshan Patel, Arya V. Patel, Sharanj Sani, Rishi H. Shaw, Raul Singh, Swapnil Singh, Rachel Tam, Divyesh Antravetti, Selena Wong, and Cindy Zhu, again, National Merit Finalists. Presidential Scholars, Akshash Waitong Anna, Kaushik Ishu Kapali, Irene Alquann, Raul Ravindranathan, Rishi H. Shaw, Deepthi Shankar, and Vitale Asia Mudigati, again, our Presidential Scholars. Again, thank you to Dr. Bragan and the Board of Education for recognizing our scholars and the hard work of all our JPS students and those of all the students in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw.
I'd like to turn it over at this time to Ms. Valentine, to Dr. Valentine.
Thank you, Dr. Shaw. Thank you, Dr. Bragan, and members of the Board of Education for providing us this opportunity tonight to recognize our students. I want to congratulate all of the students being honored tonight, specifically our Class of 2020 from both high schools, as well as the Class of 2020 at John Adams Middle School. We're just so proud of all of you and can't wait to see what the future holds. In addition to recognizing our honored students tonight, I want to give a special thank you to the JAMS community, who really showed during these last few months how together anything is possible, because this was certainly not the year that we expected or the end of the year that we expected, but we all were able to come together and show the power of collaboration and how that really benefits everyone. So thank you all. I'd like to start now with the recognition of the John Adams Middle School Student Band, the CJMEA Intermediate Region Band, led by Mrs. Buckaloo. Congratulations to Megan Lay, Katie Foo, Simron Tangri, and Hirday Jolly. Congratulations to CJMEA Region Orchestra, led by Ms. Martin, Andrew Akamoto, Owen Way, Spandan Chandra. Congratulations to all of you. And congratulations to the John Adams Middle School Math Competition Club, led by Mrs. Orzakowski and Ms. Doherty, our seventh-place math count winner, Babish Man, and our third-place overall math count winners, Pranav Sidaraman, Vidhini Badani, Ragav Sharma, and Ryan Ahmed. Congratulations to all of the John Adams students. Again, thank you for this opportunity to recognize all of our students tonight. Have a great rest of your evening, and everybody have a wonderful summer.
Thank you, Dr. Valentine.
Thank you.
Next, who are you introducing?
Actually, that's it for those, Mr. Eriko.
Okay. Any more comments on student recognitions? Thank you, everyone, for recognizing our student athletes and clubs. They put a lot of hours and work into it, as do the administrators. So again, thank you from the entire Board of Ed. Thank you, everyone. Okay, Dr. Bragan, so you can take over the agenda from number six.
You got it, Board President, Eriko. And again, to quote one of our high school principals, it's great to see what's great, not just about Edison High School, what's great about our district with all these recognitions. Kudos to all the teachers and staff involved. As we go down the administrative agenda, next up is item B, Administration, Adoptions and Appointments for 2020, 2020, 2020, 2021.
Say that again?
I'm not saying that again forever. There's a number of things that we have to appoint there, as you'll see, our Anti-Bullying Coordinator, our district-level compliance officers, our crisis plans and things like that are included in that section. Next up in C and D, we have Statement of Assurances, ones for our high school voter registration, and the next is the Assurance for our Lead Testing, which we were both in compliance for. The annual readoption of our policies and bylaws is included as well. And then after that, we have a Policy and Bylaws Second Reading. Those policies, we had a first reading at our last meeting, this is the second reading. Two settlement agreements, ones regarding our associations, and the other is an individual settlement agreement with a student. We can't really discuss the specifics of that, they were reviewed in closed session. After that, you'll find our Summer Hours for 2020, which will be on June 22, 2020. And then last on this part here is our Organizational Table, that's been revised to have a more streamlined approach, to make sure everybody knows they're directly accountable to. And then next, we have under Curriculum and Instruction, our Professional Development Documentation. Those professional development opportunities are mostly online. We have one that's in December, which, God willing, will be able to participate in person at that point. There's also under the Pupil Services, Pupil and Special Services, the Approval of the Establishment of New Programs. We have two new self-contained classrooms servicing students on the autism spectrum that will now be at the Woodbrook Elementary School. I think that's all I have on that point, and then we go down to the Finance part, which I think is Mr. Michelle.
Yes, Dan, go ahead. All right, Dan.
Just a question, number five, what's A-H-E-R-A for the designated person?
A-here.
Yeah?
A-here. Let me find that real quick, because I don't have it pulled up in front of me. That's under the Administrative Adoptions.
Appointments.
Yeah, districts are required to have a designated person for a here, which is their asbestos, has a Response Act. And I have the training, and I have the certificate for the inspector and management planner, so I'm designated as the a-here designated person.
Okay, I just wanted to know what that was, I had no clue. My other question is, there is something that says Statement of Assurance for High School Voter Registration, what is this?
We have to assure that all the student attorney team, we're providing them the materials and opportunities to register to vote.
Okay, thank you.
We had a concerted effort to do this this year, as well as to vote for the referendum as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Bragan's portion before we go to Dan?
Yeah, just a quick comment, just for the org chart, it just, the lines look a little bit odd to me, you know, when I compare it to what the org chart I used to see. If we look at the left-hand side, you have a Transportation Supervisor reporting into Manager of Enrollment and Data Systems, they have Transportation Staff. I would assume they are reporting into the Supervisor, but the staff also have a line going back to the Manager of Enrollment and Data Systems. I don't know what that is. It looks a little bit odd to me. And it also, there's, in the middle, there's a Guidance Supervisor that's reporting into the principals, but there's underneath, there's another line coming back to the Chief Athletic, Chief Academic Officer. Yes. So, yeah, I don't know those things, if it's something dotted line, then it should be dotted line, and if there's a direct reporting, it should be solid line, that's what I've been used to. Okay, I'm used to these kind of diagrams, but this one's a little bit, just a little bit odd to me, and just a comment.
I appreciate it. What I could comment on both of those situations is that, yes, the direct report is the person directly above them, but they are also accountable to the overall supervisor or director. So for instance, I'm the superintendent, I'm on the top, but if I walk into a building and I want to have an interaction or conversation with the teacher and provide some guidance, I still have that capability to provide that direction as well, and not his or her direct supervisor, ultimately, I am everyone's direct supervisor. So that was the intention, Mr. Shi, if we could clarify maybe a little more, we'll take a look at that, too.
Okay, just a little bit odd than the ones that I used to see, but that's...
Okay.
Anyone else on Dr. Bragan's portion, Administration and Curriculum and Instruction, Pupil Special Services? Okay, Dan?
Okay, I got 63 resolutions. The first item is the minutes for the May 6 to May 18 board meetings. Second item is the Board Secretaries' Report for April, along with the Treasurer's School Money Report. Then we have a copy of the Investment Report for the month of May, we received $7,295 in interest, and we've got a total for the year of $430,778. And then after that, I have all the resolutions we're looking for board approval for. The first one is for our...
Dan, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
This is the, what reported this? Close this.
April.
Yeah, this is a one, report of the Secretary to the Board of Education, this is, what number is this? This is a 148?
Yeah, that's the Board Secretaries' Report for the month of April, correct?
Yes. So just the last page, available 40 million, that's, and we also have, what is this? The column before this, this is the one we owe, right?
Those are the encumbrances that we haven't paid yet, correct?
Okay. Okay, so I just have a question, question on this building improvements, that's 1.957 million dollars, and there's another site improvement of 1.8 million dollars. What are those? This is for the month of April, and this is all collected? I thought we don't have any construction going on right now.
No, no, but we do have the athletic field going on at Edison High School, that's part of it.
That's an athletic field, okay?
Yeah, the building improvements, that's part of that, yes.
Okay, what is a site improvement of 1.8 million dollars?
Site improvements is all the construction that we've done, all the paving we've done for the year? Let's see, 1.8 million?
Yeah, 1.8, 1.811145.
Yeah, that's the, that's the encumbrance for the, that's what we still owe on the field. The site improvement is above that.
So, so, so for the red field, so besides the 1.6 million dollars, we still have 1.8 million dollars for the site work?
Well, not just that field, we have, we have other things going on right now that we still have money outstanding for.
Okay.
That's already been covered, and that's the money we still owe out, and in that account, we still have 264,000 available.
So how much is the total for the Edison Athletic Field? I'm just curious, I saw it was 1.6 million, it covered everything.
We've had some change orders for the batting cages and for some fencing and the dugouts and a few other things, so we had another $250,000 we had to put in there.
So the total is 1.8?
Yes, somewhere in my neighborhood, yes.
Okay, but you already have 1.957, I thought that's part of the, you know, the baseball field, and this is another, it's also in part of 1.81 million dollars, that's, is that a double count or I misunderstood?
No, that's how much we still have not paid them at this point in time through April. We have paid them some of the money since then, because now we're into June, so that number's reduced significantly.
Okay, so this, the 40 million dollars, it's still the money we have left by the end of April. So by the end of June, there should be zero left there, right?
No, it won't be zero, no.
Okay.
The reason why it's 40,000, 40 million right now is because we still have two more months of salaries to pay.
Okay.
Each pay, twice a month, runs about seven and a half million, so about 30 million of that's going to come off for salaries alone.
Okay. All right, so we'll have to see what happens at the end of June, I hope that we have a big number left over there.
So Dan, just a quick question, because we're talking about numbers, how does the budget cut affect everything that we had planned earlier?
Well, that's for next year, and Dr. Bragan and I have been trying to discuss how we're going to adjust our budget for that $3 million cut that we've had, and we're going to make a recommendation to the board probably next month.
Okay, thank you.
We were, I think, Dan, we were talking about having a Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, we'd go over those options and then present to the board, if I, did I remember that correctly, Dan?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right. Okay. All right, so if you want to go back to Resolution Number One, these are the depositories for all of our bank accounts, we have quite a number of bank accounts, as you can see. We have some within, most of them with Investors Bank, and we have a few with Affinity Credit Union. We have to appoint those every year, so we're just asking for the board approval for that again. As you can see, the checks will be signed by Mr. Eriko as president, myself as the Board Secretary, and then we have the list of our different financial institutions that we can invest with to try to maximize our interest. A second item is the...
So Dan, I think I asked this question before, how do we get additional financial institutions onto this list so we can look into for better interest? Because if I remember, what is our average daily balance at the Investors Bank of 40 million dollars, is that correct?
No, but we're close to 20, but it gets lower as we go through the year, but right now, we've been running around 20 million every month.
Okay.
By the end of the year, it'll be quite a bit less than that, obviously.
Yeah, but that's a lot of money, so if we can look into different financial institutions that can give us a little bit more interest rate, that'll be good, because I think I brought this in up last year at one of the public sessions.
Well, we have 11 now, if anybody has any recommendations for me, I can always add them, but right now, we do have 11 that we go to for rates. Second item is Fund Investor, as the Chief Financial Officer for the district, I'm appointed as the School Investor. Third one is our Purchasing Requirements. purchasing is required by law to have a purchase order in advance of a purchase, although it's a confirming order, and it's not a legal purchase. The bid limit, by the way, was 40,000 for quite a number of years, it's going up next year to 44,000, which means our quote law is 15% of that, which is 6,600 from the previous number of 6,000. We also require the... We also require the, the employees to put the purchase order through, otherwise they, they're on notice that if they don't put a purchase order through first and they order something without a purchase order, they're on the hook for that, for that purchase. Next item is.
Excuse me, Dan, sorry again, because this is for QPA. And we have spoke before that we need a purchasing agent from the audit. That was a recommendation. And we had some staff changes, so we promoted the, the purchasing agent to the assistant BA. And it's being asked for a couple of meetings. Where are we with the purchasing agent?
She, right now, she, she's still working as the purchasing agent. She's just coming in as an acting BA, assistant BA at this point in time.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll be interviewing for that position shortly. And if, if she gets the position, we'll be looking for another QPA. If she doesn't get it, she'll go back as her, as a QPA purchasing agent.
Okay, because we've been asking this for, for at least a couple of months, if I remember correctly, more than, probably more than that. You know, since Rich, Rich Peby left, I think in, in November, so it's been six months now. So if we can fill, fill the position, you know, whatever, who's, you know, who's in what position, we do need a purchasing agent. And this, this has been recommended from different audits.
Yes, and every, every purchase order has to be proved before it comes to me. So she is still doing the purchase order, the purchasing agent's work, even though she's still acting as the assistant BA.
Okay.
All right.
Dan, just sorry to interrupt, just one more quick question. What's the interest rate we get for, from these banks, investors?
We were approaching four percent, but since the pandemic, the interest rates have dropped to the point where we're getting under, under two percent now.
Okay.
So have we actually shopped around those these banks? Because if you have an average daily balance of twenty million dollars, I would assume a lot of financial institutions would jump on and, and, and help us.
Well, since the prime rate has come down so much, they're, they're very, they're very hesitant on what they want to, what they want to quote on the, on the, on the returns. I mean, I, I still do call several banks quite often. But right now, the, the difference is, is almost negligible regarding the amounts that we're getting.
Yeah, we, we've been with Investment, Investors Bank for a long time, if I remember, at least the years I've been, you know, on the board, we've been with them. So, you know, I, I would suggest if, if the FF committee can look into a shop around, see if we can, you know, get some free money out of this, you know, for interest rate.
We, the one thing, the reason why we went with investors was because all the other banks were charging us a fee and I got investors to waive all fees.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, they did pay for the football sign over at JP Stevens. So they have, they have done stuff for us in the past. I mean, I have no problem looking at other banks and sending an RFP out if we want to, but they've, they've done a great job for us. And I know the interest rate is low right now because the prime rate is so low.
Yeah, with, with twenty million dollars, I think that, I hope that our vendors can do a little bit better than just the, you know, a billboard, so. All right.
All right, okay. Item number four, this is our annual travel reimbursement line. We're limited to the amount that was in our budget of all of our professional development and all of our mileage reimbursements. And all this total amount's two hundred fifty-two thousand. And anything above hundred fifty, hundred fifty dollars has to be on the professional documentation that we do every month. So we do that in advance of the, of the travel. Item number five is the petty cash. We have a three hundred dollar petty cash number. We've had it for the last thirty-five years. One, one expenditure cannot exceed seventy-five dollars. We set that up every year. We close it out at the end of every year and they start it up for the new year. Item number six is the uniform chart of accounts. This is the state chart of accounts. We just have to adopt that. We're going to use the state chart of accounts, which is what we're going to be doing for next year. The next one is our list of our taxional annuity providers that we currently have. You can see that there's eight of them total. So far, they've been doing a great job. This, the administration, the staff seems to be very happy with them. Number eight is the designation of admin partners. They're the ones who actually, we send all of the four, three B and four fifty-seven tax deferred monies to them. They distribute it out to the different, different providers. And the fees are paid for by the providers. Not our staff, not the district, but the providers pay the fee that goes to admin partners for that, for that service. Number nine is designation of our official newspapers that we advertise for all of our meetings and our postings for positions and everything we post goes to the home news and the Star Ledger.
Dan?
Yeah, all right, sorry.
Can we have an online official notice?
For, we can do that in addition to the newspaper, but we have to do the newspaper also.
Right.
Okay.
Can we do it?
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we, we put it on our website. Generally, we put everything we, we put in the paper, we just put it on our website. Is that what you're talking about, on our website?
No, have it official like as if it was a newspaper. Because I don't know how many people read newspapers anymore.
That's exactly what I want to say. Online newspaper. Can we get an online, quote, quote, online newspaper as part of this?
I, I.
Like, for instance, we have the Star Ledger. Do they have it online?
I, I think old papers have that online, but I have not checked with them. I'll have to, I'll, I can check with them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Item number ten is the list of.
Oh, hold on, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add, you still, right now, you still got to do the, the, the paper piece, even though there were brand new, there were modified emergency regs from Department of Community Affairs. It's, it's still the paper, and then the paper's usually posted online, too.
If you don't get the newspaper, you don't see the notice.
Well, they do both, Hope is saying.
Right, the newspaper publishes their, their.
Newspaper.
Star Ledger does, posts their legal notices online also.
Yeah, but you have to be, have their paper.
For the Star Ledger, no, I'm not sure for the home news.
That's all I'm going to say, you know, if, if we can have a link or something on, on, on a website, on a district website, besides the, the physical paper version and a link to the digital version of the papers, that, that's, that will serve the purpose.
We do that?
Uh.
I hope.
Are we allowed to give out?
I, I don't know, because I don't know what their, their subscription requirements are. So you may be able to. There may be a fee associated with it. I do not know.
Okay.
We, we have an Edison Township Board of Education Facebook page. It's not very active. Is it possible to post those, that information there?
That official?
We can make it official if we want to.
I mean, it's a, it's an official Facebook page of the Edison Township Board of Education. I don't know who manages that, though.
But there's something for them to look into. We don't have to have a decision today. Just something to look into suggestions, right?
All right, okay, no problem.
Yeah, Dr. Brayden.
Dr. Brayden. Facebook, we'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, Dr. Brayden's a tacky guy, so he'll figure it out.
Yeah.
All right. Item number ten is the list of our state contract vendors that we purchased for during the twenty, nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty year. We're required to report that to the board by the end of the year. Number eleven, we want to transfer five hundred, five million dollars from our free balance that we're going to have at the end of June into our capital reserve account. And that's still believe, after that, we're still going to have probably somewhere close, somewhere close to another five million in free balance that we'll be able to carry into next year as tax relief. Item number twelve.
So, Dan, sorry, so when we were doing the budget, we said we had five point eight million dollar surplus. So now you're, you're saying we have ten million dollar surplus?
Well, five point seven was from last year. We appropriated that against this year's budget. This year's budget, that was balances from, that was the surplus from the previous year.
Which, which was the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen or twenty nineteen, twenty twenty?
Twenty eighteen, nineteen, which was last year. We ended up with five point seven million dollars in excess surplus that we appropriated towards this year's budget.
This year, which is nineteen twenty or twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget has five point seven million dollars appropriated towards it.
Yeah, that's from, from, from eighteen to nineteen, from eighteen to nineteen, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so we, we, we have another five million dollars from, from school year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. This current school year?
The current school year, the forty million that you were talking about before.
Yeah.
When, when, when I get thirty million dollars off of that for salaries, I'm anticipating we're going to end up with somewhere in the close, close to ten million dollars in left. And I want to put five million of it in capital reserve and use the other five million as tax relief for the following year.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I love the idea of tax relief.
All right, Dan, oh.
I'm just.
You like that idea, right?
Love the idea of tax relief.
Yep, okay.
All right, item, item number twelve, we received notice from the federal government through the state for our IDA monies that we get every year. It's our entitlement. We're getting three million nine ninety-six. It's an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars. We need the board to approve the acceptance of those entitlement funds, plus give us authorization to submit the application down for approval. So we'd like to do that tonight. Next, we have the bid for a time material bid for our HVAC surface. And we'd like to award it to Peterson Service Company. We haven't dealt with them before, but they were a little bitter on this bid. So we'd like to award it to them tonight. Next is our timing material roofing.
Sorry, so we have checked these, these vendors, right? You know, we don't have this, the thing that was in the audit that was, was HVAC, right?
No, no, these guys, they were one, actually, there's nobody on this list that we've dealt with before, so all of these contractors met.
These are, these are all legit vendors. They, they don't have that, you know, one vendor, they have, you know, two, two addresses and stuff. That funky business. Okay, all right.
Okay, I don't remember.
Because that happened with us before, yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Item number fourteen is our time and material for our roof maintenance. We want to bid on that, and the low, low bid was for Patwood Roofing, who has won it last year. Did a good job for us, so we're happy with that. I don't, thirteen, this was the bid for the built-up roof that we had last month that we tabled. We want to reject that. That one came in at one point nine million dollars. And we rebid it for this roof, and it came in at just under one point three million and fifteen point eight, fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars for required scanning and about approximately a hundred fifty thousand dollars for replacement of wet insulation. Still brings it up to about one million four fifty. So we're saving, in this case, about a half a million dollars. So we are recommending we reject the first one and award the second one.
Thank you, thank you.
The second one is for high-grade insulators who did the work for us last year.
All right, so Dan, I, I think if I remember last time, you, you mentioned to me that one of our silicon roofs had a bird picked on it. So do we know which school has it? Do we have a picture of how big the damage is?
It was Martin Luther King. There was about six spots. We called instead of high grade, they came in and repaired it. I just understand there's one, one, another section up there that's, that has a problem, but they're going to, they're going to come back and fix that also.
Okay.
So it's Martin Luther King. The other schools have not had a problem so far.
I make sure they put the additive in there, so it's bitter, so the bird is not going to touch it.
Right, right, exactly.
That's what I was told. They, they, they put some additives in there, so it's like, you know, bird doesn't like it.
Hot sauce, hot sauce.
Hot sauce. It has to be very hot.
And Dan?
Yes.
They're also responsible of taking care of all the roof drains?
Roof drains in the specifications.
Do they personally do it or do they subcontract that out?
No, they do it themselves. They, that was in our specifications that all the roof drains have to be replaced. So that contractor will, will take care of that for us and.
But they're not just checking them out, they're actually replacing them.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you.
That's in the, that's in the bid, right?
It's in the bid specs, that's correct.
They have to do it, okay.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, this is a cooperative bid with the Ed Service Commission of New Jersey for toner and ink cartridges for Treehouse. We've used them last year and they renewed it for another year, so we'd like to renew it also. Item number eighteen is the cooperative bid for integrated pest management. We, we've been using Allied Pest Services. They're the ones who won it for the Ed Service Commission again this year, so we'd like to award that. We have a few bid renewals that we have. These contractors have given me a letter that they would not increase their, their costs at all. They won the bid last year. Allied Boiler is for the boiler cleaning and boiler maintenance, so we'd like to renew those. They did a great job for us this year and they're holding their prices exactly the same as last year's bid. Also, door replacements from C and M Door. They're holding their prices the same, exactly the same as last year also. And then we have the mainstream asphalt services, the same exact price for him also. Printing services for the high school graduation program and the printing services for the school calendar. Those are all guaranteed to be held the same rate, so we're renewing them at the same exact rate as last year. We also have the one for school bus maintenance and repair.
Dan, sorry, so for the school calendar, I thought Invest, Investors Bank is advertising in, in that, in that calendar, is that correct?
That's correct, and they pay the full rate. So I got to, I got to cut a purchase order to the printer. They print it, they send me an invoice, I pay it, and investors reimburse me for the full amount.
So that's, that, that thirteen to sixty-eight, that's going to come from Investors Bank?
Investors Bank sends me a check, that's correct, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Number twenty-five is the bid renewal for the bus maintenance for North Star. We'd like to award that again for another year. Number twenty-six, this is a five-year agreement with the Ed Service Commission. Our, our current five-year agreement just expired. We need to do another five-year agreement with them. And what this does is gives us permission, an authorization to use any of the services they have for the next five years. Instead of doing it annually, we're allowed to do it every five years. So we, we want to pass this collaborative educational agreement for the Ed Service Commission for, for next year. Next one, number twenty-seven, this is a cooperative pricing agreement we want with Bergen County. And specifically, what we want to do with this is the mapping, mapping, mapping systems that Mr. Xane's using for our security. And it's on, it's on a cooperative bid with Bergen County. Right now, we have not been cooperative, we haven't been participating with them. I'd like to start participating so I could buy, buy it off of their cooperative bid. But I didn't limit it to that. I limited, I, I did put it in. I wanted anything that they have bid, I'd like to be able to go to them, purchase anything, I just a mapping. Number twenty-eight is authorizing us to use the Ed Service Commission next year. The previous one was a five-year agreement. This one specifically for next year, for us to use the services that they provide. Number twenty-nine, we had a transportation meeting and we discussed next year's subscription busing fees. The committee agreed to hold the subscription rate at five fifty, as it is this year. In addition to that, because of the fact we stopped transporting students as of the sixteenth of March, we are recommending, and the committee agrees, to give a two hundred dollar refund or a credit to all the parents who had students that paid the subscription busing fee from last year. So if they, if they have, if they're going to sign up for it again next year, they can take two hundred dollars off for each student they had, off the five fifty. And if they're, if they want instead, they can have a refund of the two hundred dollars.
Dan, I have a question.
Yeah.
So to make the three hundred dollar payment or three fifty dollar payment, how do, how do people do that? I mean, are you going to send a bill or how does that happen?
Yeah, we sent, we, we sent them notices about the five fifty. As soon as the board approves it, we'll send it out probably tomorrow. To let them know that it's available at five fifty, and they can take a two dollar credit. And then you normally, what they've been doing is they're sending, sending, sending us checks. However, we have made it available where they can do it online.
So you just go to portal and do it online?
Correct, correct, yep.
So, so Dan, I'm just probably going to talk about the, for the, the committee report. We also said that we're going to have a, a check, you know, some kind of a form for the parents to fill on the parent portal, if they want the credit or they want to have a check sent to them. Because people who graduate, you know, they don't, they don't need the credit. So, Dr. Brayden, are you aware, is, is a form available now?
It's already there, it's already there.
It's already there? Okay, thank you. And the other thing is, we have been talking about asking parents to provide interest about subscription bus. Is that also on the, on the portal as well? Because I'm not a parent, so sorry for my ignorance. People who has, who has interest to, to use the subscription busing. Is that available?
That was available earlier, I would say.
We did it once already, but at the committee meeting, we did talk about putting it out again, because we got very, very little response to the first.
Correct.
I think there was, there was an issue there, Dan. I think some people misunderstood that if you, so people who are currently subscribers, do they also have to fill out the form?
Well, we're trying to find out.
New interest who don't have the busing right now.
Actually, there was two surveys. We sent that out to the existing people. And I think we got four hundred and some odd responses out of about twelve hundred or something. And then we sent it out to like ten thousand. We only got two hundred thirty-eight responses. And that was the one for new people that, that were interested in, in subscription busing for the following year. We're going to do that again.
Yeah, I think the first one that you sent, people who already had the subscription, they, they misunderstood and thought they were not supposed to fill that out.
Okay, well, we'll make sure that it's clear when we send out this, the survey this time around. We'll make sure that it's only, it's only informational for us, so we can find out how many people are interested for next year.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next item is a contracted payment agreement with the Union County Ed Services Commission. You may or may not know that we've had a consortium for middle-sized counties. Uh, you may or may not know that we've had a consortium for Middlesex County um, to work on a negotiated number for our bus contractors because we're not supposed, well, we're supposed to pay them because the governor says we have to pay them. But we have to go through our due diligence and try to get a, a fair number for them. Um, the Union County Ed Services Commission was not part of that consortium, but they did come back and they said they would accept sixty-five percent uh, of the total amount for the route. And uh, we're, we're in agreement with that number. We'd like to be able to save thirty-five percent on that route. So we'd like to approve that one. Uh, number thirty-one is where we get into our current bus contractors that did go through the consortium. Uh, the first one is for D and L's Bus Service and they're accepting sixty percent. Now, the consortium did say if any con, if our contractors want to take sixty percent, they don't have to get, give us any documentation to back it up. Anything above that, they have to give us documentation to justify their numbers. And quite a few of them had accepted that. Unfortunately, our two biggest vendors have not yet, which concerns me because I'm worried about the renewal for next year. But uh, D and L did take sixty percent. Uh, the next one is actually Durham, Durham School Services. And actually they took less than sixty. This, the resolution says sixty, uh, but actually the number is from uh, March sixteenth to May eighth, they're accepting thirty-nine point eight percent. And after, at, from May eleventh through the end of the year, they're accepting fifty-three percent, which is lower than the sixty percent we offered. So we're happy, we're happy about that. So we're gonna change that number on the resolution to those numbers, thirty-eight point, thirty-nine point eight from March through early May and then early uh, May eleventh through the end of the year, fifty-three percent. Uh, the next item is the uh, Ed Service Commission. A lot of our routes come through the Ed Service Commission, specifically special education routes. And again, he has been working, he being Pat Moran, the business administrator for the Ed Service Commission, has been working with probably, he has probably got about a hundred different vendors he deals with. Now, over the, most of them have already accepted sixty percent. So we are, we are, we, we want to approve the resolution providing sixty percent to the Ed Service Commission so he can start paying his vendors that took the sixty percent buyout. Last one is for first students. That's, it's, uh, these are all small, small contractors for us. First student probably has about ten routes with us. Um, they will also, also take the sixty percent. Um, Barker and Dapper are two biggest ones. Um, and so far they have not agreed to the sixty percent. Both of them were looking for substantially amount, uh, amount, substantially higher than that. Uh, Dr. Brig and I have been discussing with both of those contractors. And uh, we told them without the backup documentation to justify it, we are not agreeing to anything above sixty. My concern is, I don't know how far we're gonna dig, uh, dig in with this thing, but if we go into the summer and I don't have these routes covered by the one point seven percent increase, which all the other contractors said they would take, um, I'm gonna have to be forced to put out three hundred and fifty routes for a bid. Um, and uh, they may not like it, but I don't care. Uh, if they don't agree to a payment, we're gonna put a bid out for all of those routes, for all the Barkers and Dappers routes. And it's gonna be a huge amount of, of, of business out there and hopefully we'll be able to get contractors to cover it. Uh, but hopefully uh, we'll have, we have routes in September if we go back to school. If we don't go back to school, I guess it won't be an issue until we do. Uh, item number thirty-five, standard operating procedures, internal manuals that we, that we have every year. We just have to approve that. Uh, item number thirty-six is a, is a resolution to approve the Ed Service Commission of New Jersey to handle our Title One and our IDA services for non-public schools only. We do that every year. Um, number thirty-seven, this is the inter-local service agreement we have with the township that allows both of us to buy off of each other's bids. If they get a better bid for s- s- salt and we have a better bid for paper, uh, we could purchase off each other's bids. As long as we're saving money, uh, we would like to cooperate with the township on that. Uh, item number thirty-eight, uh, we went for an RFP for an auditor. Uh, we only received one proposal. So we'd like to go, reject that one and go out again, see if we could get some more interest on this. Uh, we were concerned that we only had the one. So we're gonna see if we can get some additional quotes or proposals from uh, auditing firms. Then number thirty-nine, our appointment of our broker of record. Um, we had Alamo this year. Uh, the uh, we've discussed a number of times about the commission he was getting. Uh, he did give us a proposal which dropped his commission down by like over half a million dollars. Uh, and he, and he capped it at two hundred forty thousand. Uh, being that we only have two weeks to go in the school year, we felt it was a little, it's gonna be a little tough for us to make a change at this point in time. Uh, so we are recommending we stay with Alamo Insurance Group uh, for this, for next year, based on the uh, one point two five percent up to a cap of two hundred forty thousand dollar commission.
Just wanted to, um, just a comment, uh, just kudos to Dr. Brig and Dan and Ralph for working diligently on this and saving our district five hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, item number forty, uh, we went out to bid for uh, on the RFP for an architect of record. And we received thirteen different proposals and the numbers were all over the place. Uh, but the lowest one of the bunch uh, with a four point seven five low and guarantee of not to exceed five point seven five was USA Architects. Uh, so we're recommending USA Architects. We've had it before. They did a nice job for us. They also handled the FDR Modular Classroom for us. And we're still working with them, with the contractor on some of the issues that we still had over there and he'd be a very cooperative. I could recommend them for, for, for appointment tonight.
So quick question, Dan. So you, USA Architects there is the, the lowest that came in with the uh, the proposal? This is not bid, right? This, this is, this is uh, RP. Okay. Yeah. Okay. All right. So there's the lowest one. Okay.
Yes.
All right. So can you explain to the public what the, the competitive bid and this RFP is? Cause I think some of the folks uh, had the issues before about, you know, why you're not doing the competitive bids with, with professional services. Can you just explain to the public?
Well, the state, uh, the state allows for professional services that you can go offer a request for proposal as opposed to a formal bid. And the, the advantage of doing that is that if you get, if you put a formal bid out, you have to go with the lowest bid. And if it's somebody that, that you don't think is qualified based on the services they provide or the number of staff members they have or how, the long they've been in service. On a formal bid, you have to give it to that lowest bidder to meet the specs. With RFP, other things fall into play. You don't have to go with the lowest one. You can go with the one that does the best, will do the best job for you. And we do that with professional services, which is including the architects.
If I may?
And, and for, for this one, they, they, they just happen to be the lowest as well, right, Dan?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
If I may, Dan, the standard is price and other factors considered?
That's correct. That's, that's the terminology I use. Correct.
It's the specific terminology.
Exactly. Um, uh, the next item is number uh, forty-one. That's the appointment of the attorney. Um, we are recommending the Bush Law Group again at the same rate of one sixty an hour as we had for last year. Then number forty-two is.
Can I have a quick question on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
So uh, Bush Law was just appointed uh, in uh, um, February or March, right? So their contract is now gonna be up until next year's February, March. So I thought that when we, we had a, uh, this is not specific for Bush Law, just, just the general process question, right? So um, the board approved a, a policy that we is gonna, we're gonna evaluate certain vendors before we extend their contract. So did we do that for, for, for Bush Law or some other, the contracts that's, that's appointed here? Uh, uh, you know, for this particular one, cause their contract is not expiring. So we're, we're giving extension. And the others, there are uh, expiring and did we actually go through the process that, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll evaluating them given the policies that we adopted. Uh, I think it was la, later last year or early this, this year.
Okay. Uh, regarding the attorney, when we appointed them in March, we only appointed them through June thirtieth, knowing that official year starts on July first. So their, their contract is expiring now. So that's the reason why we're gonna put them in for next year.
Okay.
The evaluation, uh, I did talk to Mr. Dr. Brig and about the services we've had with these guys. Um, as far as.
It's not specific to them. Yeah. It's, it's, it's like a general. That's why we, we pass a policy. It's not specific for one particular vendor, right?
Right. Right. Yeah. Yep.
Do we do that?
Well, we did discuss them and we did talk about the services they provide. If there was any concern, we would have definitely brought it to the board and said, we'd like to go out again. Uh, but in each, each instance of the ones we're recommending for reappointment, we were, we were very happy with the services.
Okay.
I think Mr. Sheen, in answer to that question, the ones we had concerns, we, we did try to evaluate and went out.
Okay.
The architect, the roofing um, contract as you actually mentioned and, you know, in the end it's gonna save a significant amount of money. So it was the right thing to do. As well as with the, the health broker. And at the end of the day, the Alamo company uh, was the best choice as well. So I think through cumbersome to do it with everyone for every reappointment, if there's a concern or an issue that we're realizing we should do it. And, and I would say the same thing too. If a board member feels there's a concern or something we need to address, let us know and we'll do a specific evaluation or RP on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Item number forty-two.
Who's typing? Please. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
It's our appointment of our athletic physician that does the physicals for the, for the athletics. Uh, that's Dr. Ruzanello. Uh, he's, uh, he's, he's willing to do it again for the fee of fifty dollars an hour, like he has for the number, a number of years at this point in time. So we'd like to approve him. Uh, we also have the appointment of the chief school physician, which is Dr. Aziz. Uh, he's willing to do it again for the same fifteen thousand that we've had budgeted for the last couple of years. So we'd like to appoint that one tonight.
So, so Dan, I, I have a question for this. So uh, some of these, you know, physicians, they, they've been, you know, working very well with us. Uh, they've been here for a long time. Uh, have we actually tried to see if we have other people who will be interested? And also with the school physician. So we pay this on an annual basis, right? Um, so given the pandemic, the, the service has been dropped. I don't think we have as a normal service as, as we have when the school's in session. So have we spoke to them to see that uh, um, since we paid them for the whole, whole year last year? And this year, because the, the economic is bad and, and, and everyone is, is taking a hit, will they be willing to help us a little bit or give us a little discount instead of just keep the same rate?
Well, um, Ruzanello is an hourly. That's based on, just on the services he provides. If he doesn't provide.
Yeah, yeah. That, that, that's fine. Yeah. But that, that is a different, this different topic about whether we can get some other vendors to, to, as a doctors to, to see if we have some competition to see if we can lower it. If we don't lower it, that's fifty dollars, that's, that's, that's fine. But as the others, just, just a school physician, just one example, I see additional appointments later on that we pay our annual fee. But the service is not being used, you know, for the, for the, for the three months now. So are they willing to help us a little bit?
Uh, well, we can call them. I just know that we had some issues trying to even convince him to, to do this for us last year. Um, he's fifteen thousand per doctor is not a lot of money, as you, you can imagine. Um, and he does it for us as a favor. Um, I mean, we can call them and ask them that.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure where, where we're gonna go with it. We, we definitely have.
It doesn't hurt, right? So the worst thing is they also, they also say no, right?
Yep. That's all we can do. You got it. Yep.
Yeah. The, the reason is that we didn't use the service.
Right.
I mean, typically I, I believe uh, the students go to him for sports clearance, health clearance. So I think as the sports season comes, that's when more, more students go.
Yeah, but that's next school year. So, but I'm talking about in the, in the past three months. I don't think anyone's visiting doctors.
Question. Was he involved in any of the um, items in February or March when the pandemic was initiating? Before we closed schools?
Uh, I'm not sure. I, I'd have to check with uh, Mr. Dr. Conklin on that, cause he handles, he's the one who handles uh, Dr. Aziz. Um, I don't, I never, I haven't heard that, that he was involved with that, but he may have been. I'm not sure.
No, I'm not talking about the specific one. I'm just talking about, you know, in general, the vendors that we pay on an annual fee, an annual basis. Is there any way that we can help, help, ask them to help us a little bit, you know?
Yeah, we, we have been questioning some and I, I did convince Alashi, it was Alamo who helped us with that. Uh, our student accident insurance carrier, uh, McCloskey, McCloskey, uh, he's gonna send us a check for ten thousand dollars off of last year's premiums.
That's good. That's good.
So uh, we are, we are attempting to try to get them to help us where we can.
I hope more vendors is gonna do that. They will add up.
Yep. I agree. Uh, item number forty-four is the reappointment of our uh, cooperative purchasing consultant. That's that data. We've been using it for a number of years. Uh, we pay a total of twenty-two thousand seven seventy. We do it through the Ed Service Commission. All of the county uh, comp, uh, all the districts in the county, in Middlesex County uh, participate in this through the Ed Service Commission. And we got a ten percent discount when we did that. We used to pay over twenty-five. So uh, we'd like to appoint them for next year. Uh, next is our uh, roofing uh, management, uh, architect, which is Tom Rienzi for a hundred and twenty-five an hour. We'd like to reappoint him for next year. Uh, item number forty-six is the appointment of our website design services.
Do, do we have another bid on this one? Or is this, this, this being like, it's like all these other things that, you know, we just give them the same, same contract year after year. This is, you know, just Tom Rienzi is another example. You know, I'm not saying that, you know, this is not the right rate. So I'm just saying, you know, can we bring some competitions to, to look, to possibly lower the rate if, if it's still one twenty-five? It's the same thing goes with, with the previous, that was athletic physician.
I, I checked against the uh, RFP we got from the architects that came in. And the lowest one out of everybody, most of them are in the one seventy-five to one eighty range. Uh, the lowest one has one hundred forty dollars an hour. Um, and that was for, uh, not only, not just a partner, but a senior, a senior um, uh, architect. Uh, the lowest one was a hundred forty an hour. He's at one twenty-five. He hasn't raised that ever for us. Uh, so he does a nice job for us. He knows our rules like the back of his hands. Um, so um, I mean, I, I can go out again and look for somebody else, but I don't know if you're gonna get better than a hundred and twenty-five an hour.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, just saying, you know, let's, let's, let's look into it. But, you know, not, maybe not for this particular one, some of the others, you know?
All right. Uh, so number forty-six is the appointment of the website design service at a hundred dollars an hour for maximum of six thousand. This is true with Mr. Uh, Mr. Barker. Uh, appointment of our software services for next year. There's a list of all the software companies we deal with and the amounts we, we uh, are getting billed for, for next year, for all of the software we deal with in the district. Uh, number forty-eight is the submission of the E-rate form. E-rate is a uh, federal funding uh, for, and it's actually, it's a surcharge that every resident pays on their bill that uh, we are able to uh, reimburse ourselves through the E-rate formula uh, up to forty percent of communications and internet uh, access. Uh, in, in, in the past, we've gotten over two hundred thousand dollars in this E-rate. So we need the board to approve the E-rate form four seventy to be applied to be submitted by uh, Mr. Barker, our IT director. Um, item number forty-nine is for our internet and telecommunications services. Uh, and we are doing away with uh, Verizon and we're going cable light, light path. We've had them for our internet in the past. We're gonna go with our communications also for them. And this is the, this is the type of services that we would get E-rate funding for. Uh, item number fifty is the athletic training plan of care. Uh, in the past, we've had it, the trainers put together a plan for, for both schools, for the district. However, this year the state wants an, an individual one for each school. So we will have one for Stevens and one for Edison High. Uh, item number fifty-one, this is our premiums for our risk insurance for next year. Uh, this is an increase of about three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand of which is work, is workman's comp. Um, the rest of it is uh, increase in our property values, cause we did put the additional modular classrooms on. So our property values have gone up. Our enrollment has, have, our enrollment has gone up. So our risk insurance has gone up with that. Uh, so our total amount is two, two, two million five nineteen, uh, an increase, it was an increase of three hundred thirty-six thousand. Um, next is our premiums for next year's health. Um, we actually got a five point five three overall increase on our health. However, it was an eleven percent increase on health. A ten and a half, ten and a half percent increase on dental, but a, a eight percent reduction in pre, in a prescription. And overall is five point five three percent. And these are the premium rates that we got approval for for Horizon.
So this is, they include that the six percent trend they, they promised us, right? This is the final one. This is the final. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. So they, they, all right. So, all right. So we, we, we're trying, it was, was what, a seven or eight percent or something?
Uh, the trend, yeah, the trends, and they got it underneath that. And mainly because of the fact our prescriptions are running so well, they was able to get an eight percent reduction. I, I did five point one, this came at five point five three. So we're pretty close. I was concerned about having, you know, something in the double digits. So really would have hurt us, but they were able to bring it down to uh, just about where our budget is.
Okay.
Uh, item number fifty-three is our lunch prices for next year. We're holding uh, flat, the same as they were last year. Uh, number fifty-four is our breakfast.
So Dan, I'm sorry. So what is the total of the uh, the, the insurance? What is the total? Dollar amount for, for the, for health, dental and prescription? What is the total number?
Uh, it's a little over forty million. I don't, I don't know the exact number.
Okay. Uh, but I think, I think what you budgeted in the budgets is forty-two million dollars. Is that, is that correct? So those three items. So, so, so we came down more than two million dollars, right? So, so what, what are we gonna do with this two million dollars? That's, 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 that's what we saved.
Well, the amount, amount of money that's in my budget includes workman's comp, don't forget.
Okay.
For the risk insurance. So we, we, we're not two million.
Well, no, no, I'm, I'm talking about three items. In your budget, there are three items. I, I just don't have it with, with me. That uh, you have, you listed health, dental and prescription, right? So if I remember, add those two. So if I remember, add those two, those three items up, that's forty-two and change.
Right.
So right now, you said, but just those three, your risk insurance is a separate line item, if I remember correctly.
That's right.
So, so we save some money on this. So probably a couple million dollars, I would say. What are we going to do with the money that we saved?
If we do save the money, it's going to be either flow of the free balance at the end of the year or it's going to be, we can transfer it to another line if we want to do something else with it.
Oh, we can, we consider giving it back to taxpayers, is that possible?
Not for next year, but at the end of the year, if it flows into the rebalance, we can.
But remember that when we had this additional state aid, in the first year when Dr. O'Malley was here, we had a one point four million, one point five million dollars, something, right? We gave that back to taxpayers. So now with all the switching vendors and working with vendors, so the number came in lower than we expected. And can we consider that? I guess this is a question for the finance facility committee to look if we don't need that money. You know, because you budget forty-two million dollars, we only need forty million dollars. So we're two million dollar extra.
We were forty million last year and five percent is going to be on top of that. I'll work out the numbers. I'll let the finance committee know how much it is total. But I don't, it's going to be two million dollars less. I'm thinking we're going to be running target with our budgeted number.
Well, if I look at, here it is, thirty million, two hundred thousand is for hospital. Dental is two point two million dollars and prescriptions is ten point five million dollars, right? So that's what I'm talking, we're talking about forty, forty-two and seven. All right, so if the thing came in as forty million dollars, then we have two million dollar action. Workers' comp is a separate line item, it's one million dollars. Yeah.
I was just wondering, we were at forty million last year. We're getting a five percent increase on top of that, eleven percent on medical alone. Eleven percent on three million, it's going to be over three million dollar increase just on that one alone. Eleven, eight percent reduction in prescription.
Yeah, I don't care what line items increase and what line, you know, reduce. I'm looking at the total, right? The total is what we're going to pay. And, you know, so, no, that's just a question. If we actually save some money, let's consider give some back, you know, to the taxpayers because we did, you know, jumped up the lot.
I think we should look at, Mr. Misham, Mr. Shi, I think we should look at when we have that finance and facility committee meeting in the near future where we discuss this potential savings as well as, you know, the two point nine million dollar loss in state aid. So maybe take a look at all that. And if we need to do transfers at that time, with the advice of the finance and facility committee, I think we bring it back to the full board. I think that's good.
Yeah, because I'm looking at it, you know, this past six years, you know, the sixteen to seventeen, six point nine eight percent increase just for those three line items, seventeen to eighteen is nine point six eight. Okay, from eighteen to nineteen, that's when Alamo came is two point seven five. And last year, actually, the three line items, nineteen to twenty is forty million, four forty-one. It's a little bit, it's five hundred thousand dollars less than eighteen, nineteen. So, you know, if we keep going that way and if we can save a couple bucks, let's look into whether we can, you know, give it back to taxpayers. That's all, thank you.
All right. Okay, item number fifty, did lunch prices already? The next one was the breakfast prices. We're continuing those at a dollar for every breakfast at every level. We want to continue that for a dollar for next year. Fifty-five is our tentative tuition rates based on our budgeted increases for next year. As you can see what the numbers are, our cost per pupil is lower than state average by far. And those are the rates that we have currently based on our budget. And those numbers will be certified by the board after our audit is completed. Item number fifty-six, that's the integrated preschool program. We're going to continue that next year at the same rate of four thousand dollars per student. Then we have the interlocal agreement with the township for the last key program. The snacks were eighty-five cents, we're going to ninety cents per snack. That goes right to the township and the township reimburses the, reimburses for those. Number fifty-eight is membership of the New Jersey School Board Association, which is a state mandate. Number fifty-nine is. With the NJCAA for athletics in high schools.
And excuse me.
Yeah.
How much is the school boards? Is that, did that remain the same?
Yeah, same, same number, two-sixty-six-three, correct, yep. Item number sixty is the listing of all of the contracts that are either being renewed, awarded or expiring during the year. And there's an attached list, a very long list of all the contracts that are either being renewed, which we have on the agenda tonight, being awarded, which are on the agenda tonight, or is expiring. And those are the ones we're going to go out to rebid for. Item number sixty-one is a list of non-public monies for non-public schools for the non-public school security aid. We do this every month when I get this from the service commission. The board has to approve the POs prior to them being submitted. Number sixty-two is a list of obsolete social studies books for our middle schools. We'd like to have declared obsolete. And then sixty-three is our bill list for the month of May in the amount of nineteen million, six hundred seventy thousand, nine twenty-five. And that completes my report, Mr. Erica.
Woo, damn, that was a very extensive report, thank you.
Sorry for questions.
Oh, no problem. Hey, questions are good, questions are always good. We saved a lot of money in this, hopefully during this vote. If everything passes, we save quite a bit of money, so that's a good thing. And at this time, we're going to go into public comments. I'm just going to remind the public, you have six minutes.
We didn't do the personnel yet. I went, we went to administration first, Mr. Erica.
Right, but your personnel is just a list that was sent out to the public, right? Unless you have something else to say about it.
No, my mistake then.
Yeah, we don't talk with detail.
Yeah, as long as the public has it, the public does have it.
I think the finance list might have drained me a little bit.
That's right, I'm sorry, it's my question that changed you.
That's reported. I had to go get two drinks. Okay, at this time again, we mind the public six minutes. If you raise your hand virtually, I could, I think I could see you. Let me see if anyone's hands up yet. And again, I'm going to ask you to ask all your questions first and then.
Resolutions only.
Resolutions only, correct, thank you, Mr. Shi. We have a hand up, Maria Orkut. Welcome, Maria.
Hi, sorry, I just wanted to go for the public comments.
Go ahead, oh, public comments, okay, we'll see you back later.
Okay, thank you.
Rich B is next. Is that Mr. Brusher?
Yes, it is.
He's got a code name now.
Rich B.
Yes, I don't know how that got listed.
Resolution only, Rich, okay, you know the drill.
Yes, I had two questions, I guess. Well, one came in on what I heard before about the discussion about the purchasing agent. And I think that's a good thing because that was something that after our audit that we had, you know, they recommended it. And it would be good to see that put in place. I know Dan promoted someone or something like that, but that'd be good to put in place just to make sure that we don't have another Tiny Tots incident. But the other, the other comment I had was on the attorney and the extension. And I do know that Dr. Bragan wasn't part of this at that time. I thought Dan was, so I thought he would have known about it. But the real discussion about it was that before a approval of a professional vendor, the board would speak amongst themselves in a meeting and decide whether that vendor was good or was not good. You know, and they would take the input from the superintendent and the BA on that. And I know that because I talked to a couple of board members about it. And there were concerns, you know, about just appointing someone over and over again. So, you know, I'd like to see that one kind of continue because that was kind of important to everybody at the time. Unless it's not important to anybody anymore.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Brusher?
That's it.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Albert Baker, one forty Grandview Avenue. Two questions, one, I just wanted to just got checked because it was at the very beginning of Dan's bedtime story. But just curious if I calculated this right, that the change order on the baseball field or associated field cost is close to twelve percent? And just curious what normal kind of budgeted variances we account for, especially around contingency? And then just to kind of piggyback on Councilman Brusher's comment related to the attorneys. I just, I'm acutely aware of options to renew and not renew and go out for RFPs and stuff like that. And just curious if the board would consider exploring not just an annual reevaluation of most key vendors, like I believe Mr. Shi talked about, but also just probably nuanced rules related to potentially, you know, vendors that are owned and managed by neighboring mayors and such like that. And just wondering if maybe we would explore or be open to exploring kind of mandatory annual reevaluations for companies like that? Just, you know, to avoid appearances of conflicts of interest. So those would be my resolution questions.
All right, thank you. Dan, can you answer Mr. Baker's question on the field?
Yeah, the change orders vary. We cannot by law go above twenty percent of the original contracted price. So we're within that right now. What's an average? In a lot of cases, you're under five percent. But in this case, we knew there were going to be other expenditures that were not included in the original base bid or base price. We knew that we're going to be extra, we knew that batting cages were going to be extra. We go into, we knew we were going to have some additional funding. And when we put this together, if we took money out of the capital reserve, it to the point of one point five million and the actual amount came in to about one point three. So we anticipated some change orders for that. It came in a little bit higher than we anticipated, but within the twenty percent range that the state allows.
Thank you, Dan. All right, Mr. Baker, you have another question? Okay, all right.
Ralph, just, Ralph, I don't know if we're supposed to answer, but in the bottom you see Q and A and I can see seven questions there. I don't know if.
Yeah, I can't answer those questions because I was typing before and it was interfering. So I can't answer those. So if the people in the public that want to ask those questions can come back in the open discussion, we will definitely answer those. Because if I type, it makes noise.
So that was what was happening.
That's what was happening.
That was you typing, okay.
Yeah, I was trying to answer those questions, but it made some noise. Okay, at this time, we're going to close the public portion. And now we're going to start voting. Hold on, let me get my.
Board member of comments, right?
Uh, no. After each, after each resolution, in other words, like right now, I'm going to say we're going to be voting on Personnel I or One and A. This is the time for, I guess we make a motion first and second, and then we have questions. So can I have a motion?
Motion to move.
Jerry and second. I can't see anyone but Beth. Okay, questions, comments at this time.
Okay, so again, I just want to make a comment on the personnel. So I, I like to table the appointment of the supervisor of athletics of Edison High School. So this is not against any particular candidate. It's not against, you know, it's just the process to me, it's a little bit not clean. So we have someone who is on the interview panel, who is a reference of a candidate. And the person who was on the interview panel also wrote recommendations for certain candidates. So to me, this is not the way to do and at least in the way that I've been educated in my work. And the person should excuse him or herself if something like that happens. So I do not think that the people, I think the process is tainted. So it's likely it's possible that other good candidates who are very qualified and did not go, did not get recommended because it's possible tainted process. So I like to, also, there's also, you know, I think I asked our attorney, but I'm going to ask again, is when you decide the qualifying factors of someone or disqualify someone, you can only use their experiences to disqualify or qualify someone. The person's, you know, gender, the age, family situation, you know, those things cannot be used to, as part of the criteria to qualify or disqualify someone. And I was on a committee and I think that some of those were in the discussion.
Mr. Shi.
Yes, yes.
If you would like to make a motion, then please make a motion. And then if it is seconded, then it can be discussed. So if you're making a motion to table, then what we should do is make the motion to table and then Mr. Misham will ask for a.
Okay, I'll have a motion to table, as I already said, to appointment of the supervisor of athletics at Edison High School. The status change.
Do we have a second?
Do I have a second?
Your hand up, I see Yuna's hand up. All right, Dan, we got to vote.
Okay, I'm done with my comment, you know, because I, you know, I don't think the process is a fair, clean process. And I like the board and the supervisor, superintendent to look into this. And that's why I want to table it again. This has nothing to do with any candidate, it's all about process.
Thank you.
Okay, so this vote is to table the athletic director at S and I.
Correct.
Mr. Matiker.
So I just want to say that I don't think, my personal opinion is that I don't think the process is tainted. But if there are any questions, it doesn't hurt to go over the process again. So I would vote yes on the table.
Mr. Budowski? Mr. Budowski?
No.
Okay, Mrs. Conway?
No.
Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mrs. Maroni?
No.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
This is Erica.
No. So is motion is to table?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Can we have a motion to approve the rest of the personnel agenda?
You already had a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, we do, I'm sorry. Can we have a vote?
Yes, this is for the rest of the agenda with that position tabled.
Yes.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Yeah, Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes, to everyone except for William Colibas, I must recuse myself.
Okay, got it. Dr. Chen?
Yes.
Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
This Erica?
Yes.
So Carrie.
Okay, administration, number two, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, motion please. I know my alphabets.
Motion to move.
Jerry and Yuna.
Mrs. Matiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Dr. Chen? Mrs. Pang?
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes, to everything except H, the settlement agreement with, for student number three zero zero two five four two.
Voting non-add or abstaining?
No.
Okay. Miss Erica?
Yes. So did you get everyone? Ms. Patel, did you vote?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Next is number four, pupil services, A, motion?
Motion to move.
Jerry and Ms. Patel. I took the scratch of your head as a motion. I took the scratch of your head as a motion.
Mrs. Matiker.
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Pang.
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Mr. She.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Miss Erica.
Yes.
Well, yes.
And the last one, number five, finance, A, B, and C, motion.
Number four.
Oh, oh, we skipped four?
Do number three?
No, you missed three curriculum instruction.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Go back to three. Curriculum, A. Sorry about that.
You don't know your alphabet.
No, I I don't know my numbers.
I know.
I have motion.
Our math teacher.
I know. Motion. Mrs. Conway and Mr. She.
Who was the first one?
Mr. Mrs. Conway.
Okay. Mrs. Matiker.
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Pang.
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Mr. She.
Yes.
Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Miss Erica.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Now we go to number five, finance, A, B, and C, motion, please.
Motion to move.
Jerry and Beth.
Mrs. Matiker.
Yes.
Mrs. Budowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Dr. Chen.
Yes.
Mrs. Pang.
Yes.
Mrs. Maroni.
Yes.
Mr. She.
Yes.
Mr. Mrs. Mrs. Patel.
Yes.
Miss Erica.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Thank you very much. Um, committee reports. Finance and facilities, uh, Mrs. Conway.
Okay, we had two meetings. Uh, the first meeting was on May twenty seventh at four o'clock remotely through Zoom. In attendance was uh myself, Ralph Erica, Shivi Prasad Matiker, Yuna Chen, Dr. Bragan, and Dan Mashad. Uh, Dr. Bragan had invited Todd Lewis and three other representatives from Alliant to discuss an alternative method of providing health benefits to the district staff. The proposal reportedly with will save the district a significant amount in health premiums. The committee recommended that the district send out a request for proposal as an extraordinary unspec service as is permitted by New Jersey statutes for health insurance consulting. The committee also discussed the roofing projects that are scheduled for 2021. They asked about the differences between the built-up roof and the spray foam roofing systems. The district had a bid out for the spray foam roof system due to be opened on June eleventh. So the committee will consider the projects once the new bid is received and evaluated. The meeting adjourned at five eighteen. So then we had our second meeting on six twelve at one P M remotely again through Zoom. In attendance was Ralph Erica, Shivi Prasad, Yuna Chen, Dr. Bragan, Dan Michelle, and myself. The committee discussed the submissions for architect of record that were due by June first. There were thirteen architectural firms that submitted proposals. The fee percentages were for new projects and renovations and for projects over $2 million and under $2 million. The fee ranges were from a low of 4.75% to a high of 10%. Dr. Bragan and Mr. Mashad reviewed all thirteen proposals and determined that USA Architects was the most beneficial to the district based on their fee percentage, their history of school construction, and that the district has prior experience with this firm. Number two, the committee discussed the RFP for auditing services that was due on June tenth. Being that we received only one proposal, we decided that we wanted to re-advertise for these services to see if we could attract additional proposals. Uh, number three, the committee discussed the RFP for health insurance insulting services that was due on June eleventh. There were six proposals received with annual fees ranging from ninety-five thousand to four hundred fifty thousand. The committee is recommending that the district remain with the existing health insurance broker Alamo Insurance Group with their reduced fee of 1.25% with a cap of $240,000 on their commissions, which actually works out to be less. The committee discussed the rebid for the spray foam roofing system for the five roofing projects scheduled for the 2021 year. The original bill bid, excuse me, for the built-up roofing systems totaled 1.9 hundred thousand dollars. The rebid for the spray foam roofing system totaled 1.286,000 dollars with the required scanning the roofs estimated to be fifteen thousand eight hundred and an estimated replacement of wet insulation totaling of about 150,000, bringing the estimated total cost to 1,450,000. With a cost savings of over $500,000, the committee is recommending that the district awards the bid for the spray foam roofing system with a smile. The mid uh the committee adjourned at one forty-three P M. That's my
Thank you, Mrs. Conway.
Can I have a just quick question?
Sure.
Yeah, so the uh the wet uh area removal, is that uh does it bid by a fixed dollar amount or this is per square footage? Because the the dumper seemed very, very high, you know, for for the for the for the uh removal. Is that is that a, this is estimate?
Yes, it's it's an estimate, yes.
Okay.
How much how much wet, we know that we have uh Wood uh Woodbrook, I believe, uh is sub, there's a substantially uh wet area over there. And they replace anything that's wet. That means they got to tear off the built-up roof and put down uh new insulation and then put this spray stuff on top of that. So uh, we estimate it to be 150,000. It could be a little bit higher, a little bit lower, but that's the estimate, best estimate we can come up with right now.
Okay, so that's based on that uh whatever is of the per square footage, whatever that 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 they're they're they gave us, right?
The scan, the scan will identify whether what insulation is. And that's what they're wired to replace.
Okay, so so that's not the max. That's possibly that the, this is somewhere the the educated estimate, I guess. That's what it is, right? Okay, all right, thank you. Because it seems very high, okay, but.
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, next is transportation mission, uh, Dr. Chen.
Hi, um, we had a transportation committee meeting on June fourth uh two thousand nine uh twenty at at four P M. And the the attendants uh were uh Carol Budowski, uh Jerry She, uh Dr. Bragan, uh Dan, Michelle, uh Richard Benedict, and myself. Um, the first item we talked about is the subscription bus passing fee for the next school year, and we decide that we will keep the same fee as um five hundred and fifty um this next this year. And also, the committee agreed to issue a $200 credit or refund to the current subscription uh subscribers based on the permission services not being provided with the um pandemic. The parents uh guardians will be asked to complete a survey to inform the district whether they prefer a credit applied toward the next year's subscription or a refund. And the second topic is about is a Middlesex County um consortium. So Addison is participating, a countywide transportation consortium as a means to collectively negotiate payment for transportation services currently not being used but contracted for during the COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, the payment of the set services comes by uh way of legislation signed into law by the governor, by Governor Murphy. So the consortium agreed to pay 60% of the contract value without backing up documentation. But if the contractor requests a higher percentage documentation, justifying the increased percentage will be required. The consortium has communicated that offer to all the bus contractors currently. Uh, some of the Edison bus contractors have agreed to the 60% payment. But we are still waiting a response from several other major bus contractors. The third topic is about um the next school year's contract renewals. Edison communicated to each service provider the option of renewing the 2019 to 2020 transportation contractors contracts with the state-approved 1.7% increase. Accepting the 1.3 increase allows the contract to be renewed under the same terms and conditions as this year, but includes a 1.3% increase. In doing so, the district does not have to go out to bid for the services and both parties renew the terms of the current transportation contract. Uh, the fourth item is about a subscription bus seeing survey that we send out. Um, so the first one is for the current subscribers. They were asked if uh they would uh renew the surveys and at a cost not exceed 599 dollars, and if they would prefer a $200 credit for the services not provided during the COVID-19 pandemic, or if they prefer a uh $200 refund to dissent. And the second survey, it for the parents who are not currently using some subscription busing, but but if they want it, but if they are interested in um getting the service for the next school year. Uh, so currently, for the first survey, for the current subscription, um there are um over uh two thousand five hundred users that were sent the survey, but um we got a six hundred and sixty-five uh response. And for the second survey, um, we sent out over 10,000. Um, but we only got 230 uh feedback. Um, then we we discussed the some other matters. Um uh, the supervisor of transportation position, the district has posted that the position the night uh twenty twenty-one. Currently, there are five applicants. The posting will remain open for thirty days. Uh, Mr. Benedict uh is going to review the bus driver bus aid training issued at the start of the COVID-19 pandemic. The review is to determine what has been completed, what needs to be done, and to establish standardized annual training uh bus the drivers and aides regarding the job-related areas. Um, also, uh, it's about the 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 bus GPS system I'm tracking. The GPS systems are installed in all district buses that permit the bus to be tracked using the VERSA Trans busing software for routing and planning. In addition, student kiosks are installed on ten of the district buses that will work in conjunction with the student bus uh pass card. The the card uh include printed information that will also allow students to scan on off the bus and login for school attendance, library, etc. The meeting adjourned at four forty-five P M. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Chen.
Uh, Ralph, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, this year, uh, the governor enforced that we had to pay the bus companies uh for services that were not being provided. And obviously, you're negotiating, you know, I guess that's 60% or whatever. Was any discussion brought up about uh what would happen if we do not go back to school versus if we go back to school status quo? Would we be forced to continue paying at a reduced rate or?
I I believe
Discuss.
I I believe what we need to do and and speak in an F and F committee, I don't know if the bids went out for next year yet, Dan.
Oh, not yet.
I think in our bid, in our uh in our request, it needs to be some kind of, and I think the consortium is discussing this. There has to be some kind of language in there if we ever have a pandemic again or an emergency shutdown like we are having now, that we pay them through the date they give us services, and that's it. Something along those lines. I don't know what the exact language is. Um, but I think that's being done in other districts.
If I may?
Yes.
Um, Dan and I've been discussing it. Um, the kind of language, because the consortium is doing negotiations, they're not doing the legal piece.
Okay.
Um, so, but we've had a series of conversations on 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 language that can be added.
Okay.
But it has to be but all modifications have to be approved by the county suit.
Right, but the the discussions are to protect us uh for this type of situation if it ever occurs again.
Yes. Well, not if it occurs again, if it continues to occur.
Right, with the next bid, right. Yeah, and you'd have to have the new language in it.
Paul President?
Yes, right, Mr. She.
Yeah, so, yeah, I I'm just to 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 piggyback on what Hope just said. Um, and and I don't know what you said is, if if some other districts are already doing this and uh if they have already have that in their language, we can just look at, look at, you know, through that and 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 uh use those, you know, if they've already done their work.
Uh huh. Yeah, I think, yeah, I think each firm is uh working with their BA and their superintendent and so forth and so on transportation uh in writing language to protect districts uh better than what we were protected this year.
Yes, let's let's get it, yeah. Yeah, let's get get all the lawyers together to come up with some standard language so we can all use it.
Uh, hopefully the meeting, uh, hopefully the conversation is shorter than Dan's presentation. All right, any other questions for uh Transportation Committee? All right, Shivi, you're up. Curriculum and instruction.
Thanks, Ralph. Um, the Curriculum and Technology Committee met on June twelfth. It was a remote meeting via Zoom. The meeting lasted one hour from eleven thirty to twelve thirty. In attendance were Gail Palaski, Maninder Mahabir, um Elizabeth Conway, Falguni Patel, Yuna Chen, and myself. Um, the committee discussed the new elementary ELA program. The focus of the discussion was professional development. Currently, the P E P D is done remotely and teachers are accessing materials online. It is expected that they will receive hard copy materials soon. Um, the committee also discussed a new position for literacy coach at um Thomas Jefferson School. The position will be funded through Title One federal grant. This will have zero impact on the school budget. The school district had applied for this grant and was successful in securing it. Since academic outcomes at TJ aren't where they should be, particularly in reading and literacy, it was decided to use the funds for hiring a literacy coach. The purpose of the literacy coach is to support the teachers who in turn can then support their students better. Uh, the committee also discussed summer bridge courses for biology, geometry, algebra one and algebra two. These courses are a pilot and not a reaction to the pandemic. These had been planned earlier to prepare students for the next level. In future, it is expected that more courses will be added. Currently, these are the only transition courses that are available, given the number of teachers and space issues. Uh, the committee discussed uh curriculum projects over the summer. There will be many curriculum projects uh because the district is behind on some parameters. This will ensure that all curriculum is updated and in accordance with the regulations. Curriculum projects will include professional development for teachers for remote teaching. Since there's a chance that the school district may have remote learning in September, this will also add to the effectiveness of remote teaching. Um, we also discussed for credit courses outside high school, adding more courses for which credit can be taken outside in institutions such as Middlesex County College. Uh, this would allow students to get an associate's degree, graduate earlier from high school. Some of the other items that were discussed included uh adjustment of curriculum. The sup, the supervisors are working on adjusting the curriculum so that when school reopens, the students are not just doing review, but going back to marking period four of the previous grade. Uh, the committee discussed a social emotional learning. If we continue to have remote learning in September, it is going to be much more difficult than March, because at that time, the teachers and the students already had a relationship. Since all students will now be going into a new class, the relationship is not there. There are plans in place to address the social emotional piece, which will help build this relationship. Uh, finally, um, uh, the committee talked about summer orientation and getting students acclimatized to new school environments if in-person orientation cannot be done over the summer. And this could be done through virtual school tours. That that's all, President Erica.
Thank you, Shivi. Um, okay, any questions on Shivi's report?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Uh, I don't know if Shivi can answer or Dr. Bragan. Uh, these are the summer bridge courses. What level are Uh, these are the summer bridge courses. What level are these courses? Are they regular level courses? They're uh, you know, at advanced level? What what are these courses?
These are, most of these are honors level courses.
These are honor courses. So there will be, will this be uh um graded as normal or this will just be a is a pass and fail?
No, this is basically something which is optional and it's like a one week course that um. For two hours every day that students can enroll in and it's for a fee of fifty bucks for one week. And this will, so for example, if somebody is doing um algebra, that would give them uh some insight into geometry. So the next level, of course. So if somebody is doing algebra two, it would give them um, you know, some kind of a bridge to pre-calculus course.
Okay, you you said how long is this course?
It's it's just a, it's just a week, but two.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, but two hours every day. This is just kind of a transition just to help kids uh better prepare.
Okay, thank you. So the other thing is about number item five, uh, about um the MCC courses. Do we have a? Um, a list. I I know we used to have a list of those courses that uh um the Edison Public School can take those as. Uh, those things have been done. Uh, do we have any a list? Have we added any new courses that we can share with the parents? So this summer, because a lot of the the kids at camps and stuff got canceled, if they can take some of these courses and. And transfer over to the high school, that will help uh, you know, uh, help the kids a lot.
I I believe for uh some things that actually go on your transcript and for which you can actually get credit is only uh computer science right now. And um I believe from the next school year, more courses will be added.
Okay, so it's just the computer science?
Yeah, but then you also can do the financial literacy course.
Yeah, financial is always online, yeah.
New Jersey Virtual School, yeah.
Yeah, that's not, that's not part of MCC. I'm just saying that if we can have more MCC courses that that, you know, can transfer back into our school district. And the kids can take in the summer.
I think that that's what, yeah, that's what uh Gail um spoke about, that she would be looking into it and definitely adding more courses.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is Shannon. I think I saw some art courses also that's been offered. Um, in MCC that you can also, it's a pass or fail course. You can also transfer the credit back to your high school. There's also some financial classes. Uh, there's a list on JP JP website also.
There are lists. Okay, okay, okay. Sorry, my ignorance.
Yes.
Well.
Uh, well, Chivi, I forgot to ask. It is so this this all class offered in the summer? Is there a list i- it's on the website or how do the parents know about?
I think I think all parents received an email. The students receive an email and parents also receive an email.
The students who's already in high school, you mean? Not the incoming students?
I think all all everybody who, I think all kids who would be going into biology, algebra one, algebra two. Um, and uh geometry, all of the, all of those students got the email.
Oh, this is the the preparation like courses?
The one week, yeah.
This is just a transition and a peek into the next level.
Oh, so only those students who's who got assigned to those classes? Like if you're doing biology honor, you can, you can do this class in the summer, but if you're doing algebra two, you might be able to do that in the summer.
Yes.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay.
Anything else for Chivi? Okay, that ends the committee reports. Um, upcoming meetings and uh I'm going to preface this. Usually in uh July and August, we only have one meeting. We may be able to go back to public meetings, not sure yet. Uh, we're going to wait to hear from our governor to see what the guidelines would be. Uh, it seems like uh a lot of things are opening up and we may be able to do uh a joint meeting. Uh, maybe not at the Ed Center, but maybe at one of the high schools because it's bigger and we could socially distance. Um, also, I may make uh, I may ask Dan to make a change of the time because obviously. You know, when we have a lot of things to discuss in closed session, because we're going to be going back into closed session, we may have to start the meetings at five. Even if we do them uh at the high school or virtually. So depending on the agenda and the items that are on the agenda, we may start at five. I know it's it's going to be some difficulty with some of you. But I mean, our closed sessions have been lasting two, two and a half, three hours. So it all depends. So right now at six PM. Um, Monday, July twentieth. Right now it's virtual, but we may go back to uh in person in July. And then in August, uh, it would be uh August twenty-fourth. And again, that would be the virtual or uh a place to be determined. Okay, and that's an announcement to the public. Okay, at this time now we're going to go to public comments. So again, participants in public, if you would raise your hand. Um, I see Anthony. I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Should should we not have board member comments before that?
Uh, hold on. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Go ahead. Board member comments, Beth?
Yeah, um, I just want to say to all of our students. That I am so sorry that your school year was interrupted in the way it was, but I know your teachers gave great lessons for you. And for those in preschool and for fifth grade and eighth grade, congratulations on your promotion. And to our seniors, I am so sorry you're being cheated of your graduation. Although we have some nice surprises for you, it's not going to be the same. We wish you well, do well in college, do well in whatever your endeavor is, and we will miss all of you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, the president? Yeah, I just want to echo what Beth said, you know, congratulations to all the students. Um, you know, I I have seen that some posting that the teachers are uh going to the the kids' uh homes and giving them. You know, little gifts and certificates and stuff. This is really, really, really nice uh for our staff to do that and then the principals to 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 uh. Uh, try to make the best out of out of this uh unfortunate situation. So really appreciate um all the staff for for doing that. Um, just uh, I have a a quick question. Um, for the summer reading program. Um, the 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 library is not open and we used to work with the library to put some of the um summer reading books. In there so the kids can can borrow. Now it's it's not open. So is it possible that district can look into like a Kindle or those kind of uh um. Um, electron digital version of the summer reading program? So the kids who, you know, cannot go and and borrow the books can still read those books and. When the new school starts can can write the book reports and so on. So that's just a suggestion for the administration to see if we can uh look into that.
Gary?
Yes.
Announced on television today that actually the libraries were going to be open for distribution only. So if they needed books from the library, they could get in touch with the library and uh make an appointment to pick up. They wouldn't be able to go in, but they would be able to get books.
Okay, that that that's good. And the other thing, you know, can we also at the same time look into uh the digital technology and see if there's. Um, uh, we can do something about it uh for the for the kids. I just, you know, even if the library is open. Um, that's, yeah, so that's just one. Uh, the other is just the question. Uh, we've been talking about this for a quite a while. Uh, about this uh annual verification, our student residency. Are we ready to start doing that soon or because we've been talking about this for over a year now?
Dr. Brigant?
Yeah, that I think uh the discussion we had with our personnel committee when we created that additional position for the attendance investigator, that was part of. So that person gets hired, we definitely are going to look into that and as well as securing some software that does that verification as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. And the the third thing, and then this is the last item. Um, I spoke too much today. So is the um Dr. Brigant that we spoke about uh the the solar panels for the school district? And if we can, you know, look into this, um, it's going to be a a big impact for the long run for the district.
Absolutely, especially when those new roofs get put on. So we have.
Yes.
Secret area. Dan, uh, Mr. Michelle and I already talked to a couple of people. We got to secure those um, the options and what they put forward. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm looking for hands. Oh, there you go, Elizabeth.
I I would just like to take this time as we're winding down and tomorrow's our last day to thank all the faculty and staff. That took on such a huge undertaking uh with this pandemic. And they've gotten, been so successful with what they're doing and hopefully the students um have learned and will continue to learn. And I just can't, I'm so glad I'm retired and that I didn't have to go through it, to be honest with you. But from speaking to various teachers and knowing what they're going through, they really came through and I'm very proud of each and every one of those. And I thank the students for being responsible uh to the best of their ability to make our uh district successful.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Ms. Podolsky, anything?
Yes, I did want to kind of echo on what Elizabeth said, but she's thanking all the teachers for the great things they did. And what I think Chivi had said about the children and the years that they've been through and how tough it's been and it hopefully next year will be better. Um, I just wanted to mention that we have a number of teachers who are retiring after long careers in education here in Edison. And they're not going to go back to their classroom to say goodbye to their class. They're not going to have a big retirement party with their friends and they're just going to leave teaching after what's been a crazy year. And they, you know, work way out of the box to make it the best year yet for the children. And also the libraries are opening. I know in South Plainfield where my daughter works. Um, they are back in the buildings. However, because they were not allowed in the buildings all summer. And since March, they have mount mountains of books that were returned over this time to sanitize and get back into circulation. And they may not have enough copies of the books for summer reading. And they also thought that the virtual or the electronic version of it being made available to the students would be very helpful. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Podolsky. Chivi?
So I just wanted to um wish all um the graduate uh graduating seniors uh the very best. Um, now New Jersey numbers seem to be getting better in terms of uh COVID-19 and hopefully that will stay. And hopefully we can have uh the in-person ceremony uh later on in the year. Um, I just had one question. How long is the, what time is the ceremony tomorrow? Four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Ceremony?
Four.
Four, and how long is it? Like, do you have any idea?
Um, I'm not sure. Hour and a half or so I would imagine, but I don't know exactly.
Oh.
Hour and a half. Mr. Ross got thumbs up there, hour and a half.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
All right. Anyone else? Thank you, Chivi. Anyone else? Uh, I'm just going to close by saying again, I echo everyone's comments about it's been a tough year, you know, being in in education myself. Um, it's not been easy for the staff. Um, and administrators and central administration. There was a lot of planning, a lot of work that had to be done within forty-eight to seventy-two hours. Um, they did a great job, the best they could. The kids got the best possible education that we could offer through this online, you know, virtual learning. Um, not only do the ste- uh the staff uh and the children need to be uh commended. Um, the parents need to be commended too, especially at the elementary level. When they had to juggle, um, not only helping their child learn how to do virtual learning or help them with virtual learning. But also ju- juggle a job also. You know, a lot of parents had to work from home and they also had to take care of their children at home. And it was not very easy because I've gotten many uh emails from my parents in my school saying it was very difficult. Uh, and they hope we all go back in September and we, I think we all do. So I just wanted to echo everyone's uh comments and. Everyone from parents to students to staff to central administration, everyone. Thank you, everyone. Okay, uh, now.
Can I help? Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to two students uh from JP Stevens. Uh, one is Manish Shah, the other one is Linda Lu. These are the the juniors in JP. They are, they have formed this uh uh group. Uh, during the pandemic to tutor the younger kids one-on-one. Uh, they have expanded their network beyond Edison. They have done hundreds and hundreds, you know, several hundred hours of the the one-on-one tutoring. So uh, you know, I really want to take this opportunity to thank both of these students. And I really appreciate it, the uh they initiated the service uh during this this time. Thank you.
Great, great job, students. Okay, maybe going into my participants now. Let's see. First up, uh, let's see here, Anthony. Can we let Anthony in?
Uh, Board President, do you hear me?
Yes, we do.
All right. First of all, Board President, um, I want to give a shout out myself and I want to give a shout out to Dan. Um, because if I was on that board, I would salute you, Dan. You're a patriot. All the years of service that you have uh contributed to our board, you deserve to be honored. And uh, I just want to say thank you for your years of service and uh you are a patriot, sir. I don't even know you personally and uh. Um, I I just think that you uh, that needed to be said. Uh, number two, can Dr. Chen come from out of the shadows? I mean, seriously, I mean, Dr. Chen, I mean, everybody else got their face on there. I feel like somebody's texting you what to say. I mean, we're only left to, you know, hold it to our own o- 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 own conclusions here.
All right, Anthony. Keep it nice.
Yeah.
Please.
Sorry, Board President. Sorry, Board President, because I was disgusted by what I saw tonight. Very disgusted by a lot what I saw. And if I find out there was politics involved in any of this stuff, I will, I will do my, I will expose it myself. But uh, Board President, I wanted to wish um. All the students uh congratulations. Thank the teachers, thank all the uh support staff members. Uh, I know it was a difficult year and um I'm not feeling well. I'm going to bed. Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Anthony. Next up is Maria.
Hi, thank you so much and thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the graduating class of 2020. The next thing I'd like to say is uh thank you to everyone who donated to MC Foods. It was two vans and one and a half truckloads of food and a total donation worth seventeen hundred. There will be another event coming up in in the next few weeks. Please look out on MC Foods website. Um, my question, any update on the ROTC? I see somebody had attended the West Point graduation. So I was just thinking if there's any update for our students. Thank you to all the teachers and the staff for a great year and we look forward to the next year. A reminder, if you could send out a reminder to the parents, if they can register for the 2020 census. This would be more funding for the schools and our after-school clubs. Uh, any update on that parent survey? We have any results of what the parent survey was? And my last thing, yes, the library is working on a plan to reopen. In the meantime, can they use their library cards to get books on their computers? And thank you everyone for all your wonderful job and I look forward to the spectacular virtual graduation tomorrow.
Thank you, Maria. Uh, Dr. Brigant?
Sure, I could answer, I think, two of those. The ROTC, we're still waiting from the military to get their feedback, but you know, I'll try to push them and follow along. Regarding the parent survey, I think uh Ms. Orchid's referring to that survey that was put out by the State Department of Ed. We didn't get that information back yet and I don't know if we could even disaggregate it for our district. But I know the central office team was thinking about putting out a survey just to our community. Um, and develop that as far as soliciting feedback for September and thoughts from our community. So uh, once we get that set up, we'll make sure we get that out to everyone.
Hey, Maria, uh, I know you're muted, but uh I think uh Councilman Joshi is going to be one of the speakers. He's going to talk about the library a little bit more. All right, next up, Susan Campione.
Hello, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, so um I just wanted to announce um the ETEA scholarship winners from both high schools. Um, now that they have been um announced at the schools. For JP Stevens, Arya Massan um wa- was awarded the Future Teacher. Uh, Jerish Boongaling uh was awarded the Harriet Millman Nursing Award. And Deep D Shankar uh was uh awarded the ETEA $2,000 scholarship. And then at Edison High School, Serena Klein was the Future Teacher Award. Alicia Sukoo won the uh Harriet Millman Nursing Award. And Troy Begon was the winner of the ETEA $2,000 award. Um, I also wanted to publicly congratulate Kathy Law. She uh is a paraprofessional. She is a paraprofessional at JMI and was awarded this year's ETEA ESP of the Year. So we did a little virtual celebration for her the other day and were able to surprise her as best we could since our dinner was canceled. And I would also like to congratulate all the high school seniors on their graduation tomorrow, as well as all the preschool kindergarten, the fifth graders, the eighth graders, as they move on to new endeavors in their school career. And, you know, it's sad the way that everything has ended, but everyone is doing their best to make them feel special. So I look forward to seeing tomorrow and I hope Edison gets out and makes some noise. I believe that's at 2:30. And we enjoy the summer as best everyone can and stay well. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Next up, we have four zeros. I need a name and address, please. Zero, 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 zero.
Ralph, would that be me?
That'd be you.
Okay, I didn't know it was like that.
I just had four zeros. I didn't know who it was.
All right.
Council President Ship.
Okay. Now, how do you select your personnel committee? Because I've been on them before. How do you select it?
Uh, the board president selects the committee.
So you, so with your committee, that means that you don't have any African-Americans whatsoever on the committee?
We don't have any African-American board members. We only consist of board members. Our committees only consist of board members at this time.
So your interview committees within the school don't consist of any, before they even get to the board, don't consist of any African-Americans?
I'm not sure who was on, you know, the committees at all times, but it's up to the chair of that committee, I guess, to select who's on the committee.
Yeah, I'm just, because parents have spoken to me and I had some meetings last week and they're talking about inclusion. And when people tell me that things are tainted and stuff, I see they is disingenuous because they don't, they're not looking at all people. Everybody has their own little thing that they run, all right? Their own little group that they're into. They don't, they're not for inclusive, because the BLM movement going on now is not just about the cop, it's about including all people in the process, no matter what process it is. And my second point is that the anti-racist, which is curriculum, which is the Amistad curriculum, has been mandated since 2002, right along with the Holocaust curriculum. And I, in all these years, I have not seen it implemented in Edison School. Now, as I told people, you can have a 4.5. You can be the most brilliant person ever, but you can still be ignorant if you don't know. Once you leave the school, once you go into the workforce and stuff, you need to know about inclusive curriculum at all. So what I'm saying is that when I was in JP Stevens, we were more inclusive back in 1972 than I see us now. And I want us to move, because that's my alma mater, I want us to move into the right direction. And I know, I know most people are not like me. Most people are just self-serving. And this is where the problem that we're having now, the inclusivity, that more people should be involved in all processes. One thing I did like about the school system I came from, when we designed our committees and I was on the school leadership team, we had someone of everyone within that committee. All right, so therefore, if somebody came into or interview or anything, there was inclusivity within the group. All right, now, I myself was on the Edison Two-Time Strategic Planning Committee. I ran, I'm a literacy coach slash reading specialist. So I'm coming from an educational standpoint, not just a standpoint of the parents in the different ministers that I spoke to last week, that are very disheartened that we're not, you know, that they're not included within what's going on within the school at this particular time. So I want to know, like they tell me, if you know better, you do better. So within the, with the amount of money within the PD, it should be the Amistad curriculum from K to 12, because it's supposed to mirror the Holocaust curriculum. So therefore, that when you go beyond Edison or even within Edison, you will be that much of a better person. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ship. Thank you very much.
Mr. Board President, Erica, can I respond to that?
Absolutely.
And Borough Council President Joyce Ship-Freeman, you and I have met on more than one occasion to discuss. This is my time to speak, I believe. But, um, you know, to talk about the Holocaust and Amistad curriculum not being implemented is not accurate. It is implemented. It is implemented across our curriculum. And if you would like, or anyone that you believe, the reverends or so that you spoke to, would like to come and observe some classes where it's being implemented, we would love to do that. Regarding.
I didn't say the Holocaust wasn't implemented. I didn't say it wasn't.
I think your time has been expired.
I didn't say it wasn't implemented.
This isn't a Q and A. I'm responding to your time that you were allowed to speak. And I wouldn't be that disrespectful to you as the council president at your meetings. Nonetheless, you talk about inclusion and things and, you know, that's a core tenet of what I believe in and what this district believes in. And that education is the great equalizer. And we have to have all people, peoples of color, as well as other people promoted into the higher courses, into the higher expectations. And I had that conversation with everyone we hire. And we try to get as inclusive as we can in our hiring practices as well as putting people on our committee. As a matter of fact, you know, and it doesn't need to be pointed out because we want to do it on a regular basis and make sure that our expectations and opportunities for all our people in our entire community are the same and everyone has the opportunities presented to our higher functioning students, more affluent students, and maybe our students that don't come from as strong a socioeconomic background, that the opportunities are the same. And we are fighting for that and we are striving for that and we will continue to work with that. I've met with several community members who express similar concerns that we met with. On the agenda tonight, there were administrators of color that are included in that. And that's not because they're people of color, it's because they're high caliber individuals. And on that, we will not compromise. We want the best people for the job to help all of our children to be successful and including our students of color.
Thank you, Dr. Bragan. Next up, Councilman Vice President Joshi.
Hello, board president, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. Thanks for, thanks for having me on. Just wanted to quickly say that I heard the comments on the library and I just wanted to let you know that our interim director did send out an email just today, actually, letting us know that on the 15th, despite the fact that the governor gave the okay for curbside pickup, that's not logistically going to be practical for our library system for a variety of reasons. And so we won't have curbside pickup. However, the directors did speak on a conference call as well. There's going, you know, the library board, well, the libraries will open up shortly thereafter. And we are going to have various protective measures that we're working on right now. And that's part of the reason, that's part of the reasons why we also can't have curbside pickup. We're going to have installing protective equipment at our service desks. And they didn't actually give the specs of what needs to be done until very recently. So the libraries will open up, but not on the 15th. It will be very soon afterwards. And second, I just want to applaud and thank all the educators and parents for this whole year. Obviously, it was a very difficult testing time for everyone. Being virtual, I can't imagine the, being thrown into a situation where you have to juggle 100 kids as a teacher and just trying to teach them. But thank you all who you did. And also everyone on the board, the fact that you guys, I think, overall stepped up and did a terrific job running meetings very gratefully overall. And I appreciate that, just as a resident. So thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you, Council Vice President Joshi. Enjoy. Uh, next up, Tony Date.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Tony.
Hey. Um, so I just wanted to say a few things. First thing is, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the special ed teachers and the case managers and the parents. Because during this time, I know it's tough for the typical kids and, you know, the special ed kids, it was definitely a big challenge. But I have to say, just with my personal experiences, the teachers and the therapists that my boys had were just amazing. They just didn't miss a step with anything. It was just, you know, as successful as it could be. And this with being my older son's last year, you know, in the district, it was, you know, I couldn't expect any better than what was given to him in his final year. And the case manager that he had, Ms. Melissa Wertz, was just amazing with the whole transition of his going to college. So I just want to give out a big shout out to that. The other thing I just wanted to say is at the last board meeting, I brought up an issue with a special needs family. And it was, was looked at by the administration and it was being handled in a good way by the administration. It's not totally resolved yet, but I'm sure there will be a resolution. So I do want to thank Dr. Bragan, Mr. Conklin, and those that involved that are working, not just for this family, but the families in the district. As the special ed world is not one of the easiest, can be complicated. You know, it is definitely good to see that we have a district that does care about the kids and about the families that are working with special ed children. So I just wanted to say that and everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, no more public comments. We're going to close the public portion. Before we get a motion to close, please remember we're going back into closed session. So anyone that needs to go back into closed session with us, please do. So at this time, could I have a motion to close?
I have to read the resolution.
Val Gooey and Beth.
No, Danny, it's read the resolution.
For, oh, to go back into, first, don't we have to close first, Dan? Or what do we do first?
No, what you need to do is you can make a motion to go back into an executive, excuse me, executive session.
First?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. So Val and Beth, motion to go back into closed session.
Dan has to read it.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
We're at Section 8 of the Open Public Means Act, except the 231 Public Laws of statute 75 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting for certain circumstances. And whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances supposedly exist, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Agent of County Matters as well as one. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon if herein specified subject matters to the general measure of the country discusses as follows.
Just the two.
Status of contract negotiations. And second is the superintendent's evaluation. Three, is it anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matter should be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure or resist? And for this resolution, shall take effect immediately.
Right now, I could say foul motion, Beth second.
Correct.
Thank you.
Board president, two things. Mr. Barker just told me, make sure we use the same link for the closed session?
Gotcha.
And you don't want me in this one, is that correct?
Correct.
Or me.
Or Ms. Conway.
Okay. Thank you.
Here's a vote to go to closed session.
No, but we are talking about, are we talking, I heard you're talking about contract, right?
Yes, but Mr. Bragan, Dr. Bragan and Elizabeth have a conflict.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Mattiker?
Yes.
Mrs. Podolsky?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
This is Dr. Chen?
Yes.
This is Peng? This is Peng?
She's muted.
Oh.
I don't see her on here anymore.
I see her name.
I see her, I see her. Yeah, she's muted.
Okay. So Mrs. Peng, to go to closed session? Okay, Mrs. Maroni?
Yes.
Mr. Sheik?
Yes.
Mrs. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Erica?
Yes.
So, Carrie.
All right, now we can make a motion to end the meeting? Or no, we could do that after closed session?
No, you're doing, you're closing session.
All right, I'll see everyone back in closed session. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, public.